Committee choose, we cannot fund this any particular year.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's funded on an annual basis. Or there might be two-year contracts.
Two-year contracts, okay.
So we know which year we're in.
This is the final.
So we would need to reauthorize inside FY22 or 23?
Twenty-three, thank you.
Any other questions on the cert of land use applications? Okay. Indirect potable reuse outreach, that's data instincts, that's the Mark Milan contract. And I'm going to ask John to give us a brief update on.
Yes, so John Enlow for the record. So Mark Milan has been helping us for the last couple of years as we advance the One Water Nevada Initiative, as well as American Flat and other projects. And Kim and I met with him a couple of weeks ago. And right now, his involvement and input is even more important as we move forward with the design work on American Flat, evaluating the feasibility of Palomino and other related projects. So he's a very instrumental, nationally recognized expert in potable reuse.
You have questions on data instincts? Okay, so the next one is the Nevada Water Innovations Institute A+ Leadership Group. This one is another one where we're looking at funding them in a multi-year annual contract at $150,000. And I'll let John go ahead and provide some background on that one as well.
So this is one that four entities have funded for the last three years. Reno, Washoe County, Tamua, and Western Regional Water Commission, where we paid for UNR, Krishna, and Rick Warner as we advanced the One Water Nevada, and in particular, the indirect potable reuse initiatives forward. And so Kim and I again met with Krishna on this one a few weeks ago. And we would like to continue to have Krishna, Krishna's involvement and Rick Warner's involvement as we continue to advance these projects forward. Again, the things that they would do is like assist with our discussions and negotiations with NDEP on regulatory requirements, reviewing some of the technical process issues that we're still working through on the American Flat project in Palomino. So very important, I believe, to the success of the project. And I wanted to back up, we skipped over that expert panel Corolo, $50,000 multi-year contract. That's really associated with the same work, the indirect potable reuse work, the regulatory improvements. We've had access to the top experts in the country on potable reuse issues. And we use them very strategically when we're working with NDEP and others on key issues. So again, I highly recommend that initiative as well.
Thank you. I've looked at this survey so many times.
I know.
It blurs through the lines. So thank you for calling attention to the Corolo expert panel contract. So before we move on, are there any other comments, discussion points for either the Corolo or data instincts? Or UNR leadership? I can't tell if anybody's raising their hand online, so.
I'm watching Kim, so I think we're good.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move forward. The Long Valley Creek is an ongoing contract with Stan Tech. And that one has been. My understanding of the project is that it's an evaluation of the potential for discharge to Long Valley Creek from Renostead Water Reclamation Facility, Red Rock Reservoir, and Cold Springs potentially.
Probably more like the Cold Springs would be more focused based on the alternatives moving forward for the other plant.
For the Efluent guidance document that we're working on.
Yeah, so it'd be basically looking at the feasibility of getting a permit for the Cold Springs plant to discharge. Could involve water from other plants, but probably focusing just on Cold Springs, like I said.
Okay.
Immediately.
And I think currently, they're kind of waiting on the outcome of the Efluent guidance to continue to move that forward. So it's kind of on hold until.
And the water balance study needs to be done in Cold Springs, too.
Okay. So that's a current agreement. Any discussion on that one? Comments input? John?
John Martinez, John Enlow. Hey, Dave Solero, Dwayne had expressed a desire to kind of take this over. Do you know where that stands?
You know, John, I do not, but he and I did discuss that about getting someone onboard to start running with this, paid for out of our sewer utility. So not 100% sure that there's a need for this body to be taking that on. But I, you know, it's been a couple of weeks since we've had that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, the wastewater source control plan, UNR, that's another ongoing project that Krishna Piga is heading up. And this is in, my understanding of this is also that this is a prerequisite to meeting potential permit requirements for the A+ Efluent reuse projects, correct? And Krishna, again, this has started progress. They're working on it right now. And he said that he would bring that and provide an update to the group when he brings the update to the reclaimed water project or the demonstration projects. So do you have any more to add to that, Jim? Or it's ongoing, it's a $200,000 contract. They've spent about $50,000 of that, or it's $200,000 total, $100 each year. They've spent about $50,000 this year. So I put $100,000 on there anticipating that they would spend the other $50,000 this year and then have another $100,000 for next year's budget. So. Any discussion on that one? Okay. One Trekkie River Foundation. I invited Iris to come and give us an update, if you're okay with that. I'd like to invite her to provide an update on what she plans on doing moving forward for this commitment. So if it's okay with the board, I'd invite Iris to. Would you like me to give you a quick update of what we did with the trust funding? Or just get right to the request? Let's get right to the request, okay? Thank you for your past support. And I'd like to request funds for fundraising to continue the implementation of the One Trekkie River Management Plan, where we have 22 local agencies represented and focused on fundraising to continue the coordinated vegetation management collaborative work that's been and currently is funded right now with Bureau of Reclamation. And then also to continue and expand our adult educational program to reduce residential stormwater runoff with the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee, UNR, Reno Cooperative, Cooperative Extension, and Tamua. And that, I'll note, is focused on how people design their landscapes and how they maintain their landscapes. And then to move into Phase Two of the Trekkie River Restoration Project. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Iris on that project?
And Quentin? What's the latest on the restoration that's been installed? How's that going?
It's going well. Yeah, we have completed a whole year now of data and we collected it a month before and for the whole year. And there were no major incidences. There were seven minor and they were addressed immediately. And in general, there's been a good public response from it. And there's an average of 30 flushes a day.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions on the One Trekkie River Foundation? And I'll just clarify, it's.
Trekkie River Foundation, it's One Trekkie River under Trekkie River Foundation.
Right.
A lot of rivers.
So did I do it right, the One Trekkie River under Trekkie River Foundation?
Yes, you did write it right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, to provide ongoing support.
Yeah, and we recently transferred from the fiscal agent Nevada Land Trust to the Trekkie River Foundation.
Oh, yes. Thank you. All right. So moving on, the water quality crediting program is through the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee. And this is a project that they proposed to the group last funding cycle. This project is supposed to have a kickoff meeting. They've entered the contract with environmental incentives and they'll be kicking off their meeting in January. Teresa said that would be kickoff. So we haven't spent any of the budget to date. So it looks like that'll be rolled over into the next fiscal year as they get started on that. Any questions on the water quality funding program? Okay. The steamboat irrigation ditch evaluation. My understanding of this project is that it's to evaluate potential flood control outlet improvements on the steamboat ditch. And we talked about this with Daniel in the last item five. So it is an ongoing project. We are committed to that project. It's $170,000 agreement with, in a local agreement with Washoe County. Any questions on that project? Discussion? No? Okay. Lemon Valley Long-Term Flood Mitigation. This is a concept project. We do not have a proposal on this one quite yet. This is something that was, I think, thrown out in a previous meeting and a meeting helped from the commission. I don't know what was discussed in the previous meeting. On this, I did talk to Dwayne and he would like to see this remain as a light item in our budget and continue to move that forward. He feels he has a commitment to the communities up there during flooding events for us to start the process of looking at how we might be approaching them. So. Any comments, questions on that one? Okay. Moving forward, the Cold Springs Water Balance with Cardno. That's also a concept project that I'm going to have to ask Jim for some help with describing that. I don't.
Well, as I understand that one, the Cold Springs Valley is a topographically closed, so it's internally drained. And as development continues out there, there'll need to be water importation. And so that will affect the water balance in the basin. And also, one of the most important things we need to determine is the capacity for infiltration at the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility's rapid infiltration basin. So that would be kind of one of the parameters wrapped into the study.
Okay, yeah, you just jarred my memory. I'm learning all the projects and keeping them straight, so thank you. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay. The Nevada Water Institute is, and I'm going to ask John for help on this one again, for the research hub planning, it's a concept project.
Yeah, so this is Krishna's kind of One Water Center type concept that we're trying to integrate if we could get funds for kind of in addition to the American Flat Advanced Potable or yeah, Advanced Purified Water Project. So again, I think UNR is pursuing funding for this independently. And we wanted to have some money to kind of incorporate their planning for that facility into our preliminary design for the American Flat project.
Yeah, that was a question I had, dude. John, do we have an estimate yet?
It was pretty small. I think it was only $30,000 was what we had in there.
Yeah, let me. The research hub planning last year got $30,000. And I didn't put anything in the concept project. Well, I lied. I did for the watershed assessments and those because Teresa gave me those numbers. But we can put some numbers in there and see what that looks like in the end.
It might be hard for UNR to do anything for $30,000 bucks.
Yeah, impossible.
Okay, any questions on the UNR research hub planning projects? Okay. The watershed assessment, this is something that Teresa wanted to, it was proposed last budget cycle. It was kept as a concept project. They don't think any funding went towards it. There's no proposal on it quite yet. Or was, did I misspeak? Let's see. The watershed, no, no funding was put towards it last budget cycle. So, but it was put on the table. This is something that Teresa said is important for, again, implementation of their stormwater permit and in support of the recent integrated source water watershed, 319 watershed management plan that was completed and approved by the board. So these are, these watershed assessments help them to determine how they can reduce non-point source impacts to that watershed. So they look at different, the watershed as a whole. And this would be with the Nichols Consulting Engineering. They've been doing some of these through the 319 watershed. And it also offers them, if they do get some funding from us, it can be used as mass funding for the 319 program. So that's, it's very helpful to them. She did say that if it came down to competing for resources, she would rather have the stormwater management program update, which, sorry about the transpose letters there. She would prefer, she had to choose between one or the other, that the stormwater management program update take priority over the watershed assessments. So if we get to that point, that's, that was her comments. Any questions on watershed assessments? And I think we went ahead and did the stormwater program update in the last agenda item. So I don't know that we need to go through that again. So I'll just final, close this out with the shared work program with Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency. That is kind of my baby. I have been coordinating and Chris Wessel and Jim Before Me with Jeremy Smith over at the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency. I do have a scope of work and we're calling it a shared work program because there's so much overlapping work that we do with GIS mapping and data sharing and evaluations. There's some website support that we help pay for with that and some software support that we do in that. So this will also, as I move forward and bring my vision to the WRWC and the Regional Water Management Fund update, they will provide support to me for developing an online digital tool and ways for us to innovate that program. So this is kind of my little baby. So. Any questions on that? No? All right. Well, I know that most of you got a copy of these priorities in your board packet and hopefully you have an idea after the discussion today and after what we sent you, an ability to score those. So I guess what I need to find out is, is everybody in the room? Do you have, if you don't have a computer, we can always do it on mic on this computer. If you do have a computer, I'll send the link out via email to everybody, all the commissioners, that they can do it on theirs. You can also do it on your phone, you have access to that. So is there anybody that needs to use my computer once I send the link out to everybody? Or is everybody pretty equipped to? We're all good? Everybody online is good? Okay. So I'm going to go in here to make email. And I'm going to send those. You should all get the link. And tell me if anybody didn't get a link. Sometimes there can be a bit of a delay with the county email system. So if you didn't get it, let us know. Close this out. I think I may have closed the window out that I needed open.
All right. At this point, I think it might be a good idea. Jen, would you mind doing just a roll call check to make sure everyone got the survey before we say go?
Okay, Daniel Henderson?
Yes, I have the survey link.
Michael Whitmer?
I have the survey.
Okay, Bill Haug?
Yes, good to go.
Michael Drinkwater?
Yes.
John Enlow?
Ready.
John Plansburg?
It's loading on my phone.
I got it.
John Martini?
Got it.
Chris Melton?
Got it.
Dave Solero?
Just about finished.
Reverend Wright?
Yeah, got it.
Okay, everybody who's present has it.
Thank you, Jen, much appreciated. Kim, should we just go?
No, no, we need to do public comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We have public comment by Michael DiMartini.
Thank you, Jen, Mr. DiMartini, please.
Yes, good morning. Michael DiMartini, professional engineer. I'm here representing a number of water rights owners in Cold Springs and owners of applications in Lemon Valley and the Silver Lake area. Hopefully I'll be done in three minutes. So I might need a minute more. So I'll try to focus real quickly. This evaluation that's before us here today is regarding funding. And I appreciate that. I do want to put on the record again that there's also a need for projects to take care of likely flooding in the future, especially due to climate change. But to that extent, the people I'm representing have already spent up into more than six figures regarding implementation of plans to protect the valleys, the closed basins from flooding. And that's particularly true in Cold Springs Valley. That's a closed basin. Once water gets into the white lake in Cold Springs Valley, it mixes with the coital material and with the other contaminants that are quite caustic there, it becomes essentially impossible to do anything. I've done a number of studies over the last four years and have proven that from an engineering standpoint. So we can't wait till the lake fills up with water, like could happen unfortunately this year, and then try to implement something. Nobody would walk the water. So to that extent, we have submitted plans to the Western Regional Water Planning Commission that are on file. We are planning to proceed on the projects. And I do appreciate the work on the studies. I would like to be a stakeholder and be involved in the meetings regarding water balance because it's not just a matter of Efluent. It's a matter of stormwater. And I have right now over 10 gauges monitoring the flows, both the rainfall in Cold Springs as well as the flow in the creeks. And I've been doing that since 1971. So we have a lot of information regarding the water balance. So I just want to say that I'm available. I do support more studies. But we've done a lot of them, as Mr. Hawke has said. We need to start implementing something. We're not asking for funding right now, but we do want to be recognized as part of the plan. And we do want to move forward immediately. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini. Any other public comment, Jen?
We have none.
Okay, hearing none, can we say go now, Kim?
I think we can say go now. Yep, I'm getting the nod from Michael.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Let's take the survey. Thank you.
I seem to be stuck on number two. I'm trying to rearrange the priorities and I'm on my phone. And for some reason, it's not, maybe I'm not pressing the right thing or. Are you holding? I just figured it out. Hold them down and then slide them. All right. Okay, my finger is not working. Thank you. You're welcome.
I only did it once.
Yeah, even as a button, let you take it again, don't take it again.
She got tied up with something, he was texting me.
I think so, yeah. Do you need to boogie on out?
No.
I'm good to boogie here.
Everybody online finished? Anybody not finished, I guess, should be the question. I have 11 responses. Okay. I'm going to refresh it one last time.
Kim, before you go on, since we're doing this in kind of a different way this year, Mr. Pawnee, do you want an affirmative response from each member that they've taken the survey? Are we good to go?
Results electronically will confirm that.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Just checking.
Okay, so this is our confirmation that we have all the results. We have Bill Hawke. We have Chris Melton, Daniel Henderson, Dave Solero, John Enlow. John Enlow, wait, in a different order. All right, I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay, I'm gonna start over. So now we have Mervyn Wright, Michael Whitmer, Mickey Hazelwood, Michael Drinkwater, John Martini, John Flansburgh, John Enlow, Dave Solero, Daniel Henderson, Chris Melton, and Bill Hawke. And that's everybody that's present, correct? Okay. Then what we'll do is, so the way I have to display the results is this chart below will not be very meaningful. I'm translating this into an Excel spreadsheet, which will show how each member voted on each question. This one, and it will also show how they voted on this, but I'm going to snip this really quickly, just so you can see what I'm doing. Put this. Okay. Going to my results spreadsheet here. I'm sorry, I'm going to maximize this so I can see. Just kind of paste this here. It's a combination of results. So I just want to do that before I export the information. Okay. I'll dock this. And then in the survey, where's my survey now? Okay, so in the survey, I'm going to hit this Excel spreadsheet, and it's going to export all the scores. And so you can see there's each commissioner's name, and then the questions, and then all of the results that come out of the survey. And so what I'm going to do is I preset another worksheet to translate this for us. So I'm going to take all of these, copy them. Put them here. Oops. So we won't be working in this worksheet anymore. I copied it over to this worksheet. Move John out of my way. All right. So it shows the date, the time, when they completed the survey, who completed it, and the questions. And so these questions, it says question two, and you'll see it's regional water planning, and it corresponds with regional water planning as an overarching topic. So you can confirm that each one of these is the topic that I put above. And so this will give the scores for each commissioner. Now, do I need to read off the scores? Or is it okay just to have them displayed?
You can have them displayed because this will be included in the record.
This will be included in the record.
For discussion purposes, they need to know how they write.
Yeah, so this is just to show that each person's scores has been recorded. It'll be available for review after, in the meeting minutes. And then if we go to the results, it should populate in my graph that will show, looks like UNR A-plus leadership is the leader, and it'll have all of them sorted. But what I'm going to do is come here and sort these. I think you need to sort these. I'm going to sort them by score. And let's do largest to smallest, so the one that got the most scores is on top. And then you'll see how the projects go. So it looks like UNR is the leader with 43 points. Stormwater Quality Program, the Stormwater Permit Coordination Committee came out second. Stormwater Management. UNR Research Hub. Shared Work Program with TMRPA, I'm happy about that. Source Control, UNR. Data Instincts, Steamboat Ditch Evaluation with HDR, Lemon Valley Flood Mitigation Project, Water Usage Review, Expert Panel with Corallo, Evapo Transpiration. That's the website project, right? I abbreviated it in this. I better remember which one's which. Precipitation Monitoring, Cold Springs Water Balance, Long Valley Creek, Water Quality Credit Program. And this is the Certified Landscape Technician Project, One Truckee River, and Watershed Assessments with the Stormwater Committee. So with that, as you can see, do you want me to keep that up on the screen for a minute so everybody can take it all in?
I'm going to admit the bonehead move of the day. I did mine backwards. I ranked one the highest.
Oh. Okay. Um, I wonder if I can if I can delete your response and have you take it again. Let me go into I think I can go into individual responses. Just in case, I'm going to save that. I'm just going to do it to the desktop. Okay. Now what I'll do, I think I can go in here. Where are you? You're at the top. Okay, I think I can remove you. Okay. And then you can go in and take it again. Is that okay, Michael?
It is okay with me.
Well, it's okay with you, Mike.
And just to be clear, five was ranked for the highest, one was your lowest priority.
Five is your highest priority, one is your lowest priority. Because we're doing it in scoring that way. Did everybody else score it that way? We're good? Okay.
Bonehead today. I get that one solely.
But Mickey, you figured it out.
And there was, you know, the one score, the high number, the high number. It looks backwards.
I know, it's totally counterintuitive, but if you think of it as a one star versus a five star, like...
Well, I'm blank. Bonehead number two. Scored it in reverse. One was my highest priority.
You did it reverse too?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so think about it as one star versus five stars on the project.
I get it now.
Okay. Sorry, I should have been more clear. All right, let me go back. Whitmer, right?
You said earlier.
Okay.
Use the same link, Kim?
I'm sorry?
Use the same link.
Yes, just use the same link.
On that link, and I submitted it, and then it says, "Take survey again." Thank you, "Take survey again," and I just click on that.
Click "Take survey." Yes. Should I just delete these completely, or should I keep it as just deactivated?
Yeah, that is deactivated.
Get a job. Start charging tips. Good.
One. Okay, we got it. Both of them? Okay. Well done. We came here guys. Okay. Very good. So let's go back to my results with those two, and we go back to the Excel spreadsheet, and I'll have to copy and paste your answers in. I'm just going to go ahead and re-paste them all. Okay, that did change the results a little bit. All right, let me go ahead and sort these again. Score, largest to smallest. And then that. All right, so that puts the Stormwater Committee Program on top. And so now we have the order of Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee, Stormwater Quality Management Program, UNR Leadership, the Data Instincts Outreach Communication Plan, Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee Update to their Stormwater Management Program, UNR Source Control, Ongoing Contract, Corallo Expert Panel, TMRPA Shared Work Program, Water Usage Review with Tamwa, the Steamboat Ditch Evaluation, the Research Hub Project with UNR, Precipitation Monitoring, One Truckee River Foundation, Lemon Valley Flood Mitigation with Washoe County, Cold Springs Water Balance, ET BRI, Water Quality Credit Program with the Stormwater Committee, Watershed Assessments, Long Valley Creek with Spantec, and Certified Landscape Technician. So what we can do now is have some conversations around different priorities. Commissioners can press some input on the results. And we can also start to look at what that looks like in the budget compared to last year. So would anybody like to take the lead in any discussions on projects? Do you want to look at the budget and see what that looks like first? Yeah?
Yeah, I think we're doing our priorities.
Nodding? Okay. All right, so let me maximize the screen here. Can everybody see it? I'll see if I can... Do you want to see it larger? Do you want to see the whole thing? Let me see if I can view. Hold it down a little bit. Okay. Is that too small?
I can still see it, Kim.
I'll have to scroll up and down a little bit. I think if I do it any smaller, it's going to be too small.
Small here.
Is it too small?
Mickey, we're at the little yellow way.
Well, I can, you know what, we can scroll up and down. Let's do it 100% because I have bad eyes too. And I'll scroll it up and down. That seems to be the most clear. Okay, so all the budget items that you saw on our priorities, let me see if I can share a screen here so everybody can see the priorities here. I don't know how to balance this on the screen.
I would minimize the other screen.
Minimize what?
Minimize the...
This one here?
And just put them left, right. So push that all the way to the left.
All the way to the left?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. And then this one is all the way to the right. Okay. And then we need to get rid of John. John's on the, he's just in the way.
Hit the, you see the little small square?
That's the one?
Hit the one to the left.
That one?
Hit the one to the left.
Oh, you want me to minimize it? Yeah. Oh, oh, okay.
Now he's gone.
I'll put it right there. Thank you. All right, so let me see if we can look at this graph. Is it easier to look at the graph or the list?
The graph, the graph is...
The graph, okay. All right, so those are priorities. And then here's our budget. So our budget with all of these priorities is a grand total, and I don't have the research hub amount in here, and I do not have this one we didn't put on because I kept it on this sheet because we did budget for it last year, but for our conversations, it wasn't ready to go for this year, so I didn't include it. So I can minimize these. These were also not included. Some of these items, I put C Shared Work Plan because these were with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and those projects will all follow this new shared work program. So I'm happy to kind of, if everybody's comfortable with it, I can hide some of these... New shared work program. So I'm happy to kind of, if everybody's comfortable with it, I can hide some of these columns so that we're not looking at things we don't need to look at. I just wanted you to see last year's budget versus this year's budget. Okay, so our total here, last year, we came out with 1.9 million, and this year it's 2 million. So we're about $100,000 over last year. My only comments are, is as we move through some of the contracts that I think are more annual commitments, I, I, I get the feeling that they're going to actively. Invoys those annual commitments, and so we may just have to keep that into consideration because some of the contracts that we do, or the agreements that we do end up. Putting on the budget sometimes may or may not get funded that year, or may not bill that year and get rolled over. So it's just something that we have to keep into consideration when we're. Budgeting. And, and Jim, I know in the past, um, you've said that it's a, you know, even though it's 1.9 million, it seems like it's, it's more than what we actually bring in at ease. Because of the spending and how it, it splits up sometimes between fiscal years and invoicing, it's never really exceeded.
There, there's usually a cash reserve.
A cash.
There's, there's always a cash reserve historically.
Yes.
Yeah. And then you can see, um, item 42, there's a contingency fund of 135. So you could, you could increase and decrease that to help balance too.
Okay. So is there any comments from the board on? Recommendations, uh, direction? Do you want me to go ahead and take a look at this? Jim, what do you, do you feel like?
I think things lined up really well. If you're only $100,000 more than last year, that's very close. And so, and it covers all of your priorities all the way down to, you know, those on the lower end. So, so questions? Everything else in the world is costing more this year than last year. So those numbers in column E, are, are we comfortable with those?
That's a good question. Not really what I, yeah. From you guys, you guys are more involved in the implementation of the projects. What are you thinking?
Michael, I think that some of the projects that we got ongoing, we're, we're, uh, probably be okay a lot of consulting on that are contracted. Whether it be new project coming in that we still have permanent, we saw that may have some, some increase.
And I guess if we understand that, and I agree with that assessment. So if we understand, this is getting first come, first served because obviously if whoever brings a contract forward first, and if it's bigger than what we think it, you know, because again, I think everything is costing more. That deficit has to come from somewhere else, right? So we have to then go back to this list and decide where we want to, we either approve. The, the one that comes first with the larger budget and debit something else, which would be the project contingency. Okay, that's a, that's appropriate.
Right.
Or, uh, I, I guess why I'm asking, is that how we want to proceed?
Well, I, I guess one is, is to say, this is what we budgeted. If you want to go forward, this is what you get.
Right, okay, yeah, that's.
Yeah, because we go over otherwise, and, and we don't want to starve somebody else's budget, you know, so. That's the, that's the balancing game, I guess, that, okay, that you want me to decide how you want to do it. Or, or Kim will just take charge, say this is how we're doing it.
I use my muscle. I, I think as the projects can, you know, we're gonna have another opportunity to revisit this in, in January. Hopefully at a joint meeting with the WRWC. So I, I don't know the history of how projects have either, have we had a history of projects going over budget or bringing proposals that are over what we evaluated? I don't think it's.
I don't think so, none of this.
Oh, I, I guess I tend to agree with Jim on, this is what was proposed through the project managers, since it's their budget. If they needed more, we'd have to come to the commission and, and they'd have to plead their case for needing more.
Right, or do you know they have to either, or give us their scope a bit, or find.
Phase it, we could figure out how to phase it.
Right, or find additional funding elsewhere. I think all those things have happened in the past. It's not a every, every project thing, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think that approach is appropriate to, to say, this is the, this is the budget that's been allocated to these different projects, and you've got to remember these are planning projects, so. Uh, there's not like, uh, big construction issues going on that we're seeing on some of the other projects. So I think that, uh, you know, just simply saying this is the, the, the priorities as. Uh, identified by this group, uh, certainly there will be some conversation with the WRWC. Uh, there might be something out there that, uh, we haven't thought of, or, or, you know, comes out of left field, but I, I certainly think this is an appropriate way to start.
That's a good point. This is just the very start of the budget process.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Um, I just have kind of a, a question or maybe a comment. I do, I do think stormwater planning is a priority for our region. Um, and I noticed that we've got four projects on here that are, um. That would go through the stormwater permit coordinating committee. And, you know, it amounts to a significant amount of money. It's over $600,000 if I did the math correctly. And I'm just curious, how does that fit in with, um, the new stormwater utility for Reno? And, you know, some of these are longstanding contracts, and Chair Martini mentioned that. You know, part of that was to sort of keep everybody afloat during the recession. You know, because these, these are priority issues. And I'm just wondering, as we move forward, are there plans to? Change funding agreements or seek funding from other sources, or, um, just how much that work as we move forward? Perhaps not this fiscal year, but in future fiscal years. Thanks.
Um, I'll make a comment to that. So if my memory. Which is getting more and more challenged every year that goes on, uh, serves, uh, during the recession, Danielle, uh, this was a priority set by the Western Region Water Commission to help. To, you know, to come to the aid and, and keep the stormwater permit. We, we didn't want to let that thing slip with NDP because, oh my, that's a problem. I, I lived through those days, so.
What do they understand?
I, I do think that, uh, the point you made is, uh, maybe, uh. Something we should directly ask the, the commission, if this is still, uh, a priority for them, or, uh, do, do they feel that these costs should be borne by, you know, the three entities? I, I, I think it's a valid question here. You know, we're, you know, we're, we're 10 years past that, those ugly days, so may, maybe, um, you know, that, that is a question to be posed. I, I. I'm comfortable recommending, you know, that we, we still understand that priority from the commission. But perhaps the question for, uh, fiscal '24 is, is a valid question. Is this still, uh, something that the commission wants to do on, you know, to, to support the program?
Sure. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Uh, go ahead. Who is it? John?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Flansburgh, please.
You're always in, you always have a good guess if you say John.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, hey, don't give out my secrets, man.
I, I just want to point out that on one of the, um. Uh, stormwater planning projects is the water quality credit program. And I, yes, that's directly related to water quality. Um, it also has the benefit of creating a credit. On those non-point source pollution locations. And if we can locate the credit and justify that, we may be able to move that to another area, and specifically, we were looking at the potential move it to some of our point source pollution areas that's in credit. And so that has actually benefited to us in our region on the wastewater side.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out as an idea to, to the planning commission today. Uh, certainly, we've set our priorities. All of them have a dollar sign. Uh, you know, next steps for sure, uh, you know, I, Kim will dive into where we are with budget to date. What it looks like when we roll over come July 1st. You know, some of these contracts are, are, uh, monies we've approved in previous fiscal years that, you know, honestly, there hasn't been a lot of activity on. Uh, the HDR, uh, steamboat ditch study is a good example. Uh, I think we all need to see, uh, kind of where those dollar signs are. Uh, I, I've been concerned for the last couple of years, uh, that we're, we're kind of eating into our cash balance. So I'm gonna float something for, uh, the commission to consider. Should we, should we see some issues in, in future budget? Uh, as a priority table in the scoring, is there a natural breakpoint in there that you all see to say? If we do have some money challenges based on our priority setting, we think the cutoff. And, and of course, it's gonna come down to dollars too, so it may not be as easy as this, but, uh, you know, looking, looking at our priorities, you know, is, is any score less than, say, 32? You know, subject to, um, budgetary constraints moving forward. Uh, it just looks to me like a little breakpoint there. I, I'm sure we all see this differently, but. Like, you know, I thought maybe a discussion on that, uh, you know, we won't know until we see the numbers from Kim at a, at a future meeting. So what do you guys think?
Uh, Chris Melton, I think that's a logical approach to move forward and prioritize on the lowest setting. If we run into those constraints.
This is Bill. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think that's why we do this, and that's what the results show right here. We, you know, the ones that, uh, were, were chosen to. Uh, as a higher priority, I should be given preference, and the ones that are the lowest priority, like, uh, you know. Should, uh, shouldn't.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments to my question?
I have a question, Kim. Kim Rickin, Water Resources Program Manager. So looking at that breaking point that you're talking about, um, at the, around 30 to 32 points.
Yeah.
We have a couple of contracts in there that are already, um, initiated agreements. How would you recommend moving forward with that? With, based on what you've.
Kim, again, to the, the point, I, I, it, it's not as easy for sure as drawing a line, and we won't know until you've had time to analyze where we are. Heading into July 1, you know, what your predictions are. As Jim said, you know, things carry over fiscal year to fiscal year. Uh, there, if I recall, there is still some cash reserves, so I, I hate to do this to you, Kim, but I, I think after you've done the hard work. You're, you're gonna have to bring in, you know, a recommendation to, to the commission on how you see it. And my, my point was if, if your analysis does show that we're starting to get a little, we're starting to draw that cash balance down, or. Or we're at a risk of getting a lot of bills in a, in a fiscal year and, and getting squeezed, that my, my question to the commission is, just as a starting place. Uh, I, I have always been of the opinion, once we do this hard work, that does give us a, a priority. I think Commissioner Houck stated it well. Uh, the high numbers are where we really think the funding needs to be. The lower numbers are subject to budget constraints, so. Sorry to put the, put the onus on you, Kim, but it'll, a lot of this will depend on what you come back to us with, when you look at the budget in detail and start making your projections.
Fair enough.
All right, any other discussion? Kim, any more work for us to do here on item number six? I think, yep, we're still on six.
I, I think the only thing is to, you've given us directions, so I don't think that, um, there's any action to be taken. Michael, is there?
Yeah, if they're ready to make recommendations to the commission, that's a motion to make recommendations consistent with the survey to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Pawnee. Uh, okay, I'll put that back out to the, the planning commission. Uh, like to hear a motion, please. Okay, we may be confused. Mike, will you repeat what you're looking for? Maybe?
I think I can take a stab at it here.
Yeah, motion to approve to make recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission consistent with the results of the survey.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Solero. Motion by Commissioner Solero, uh, can I have a second, please?
Second, Chris Melton.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, and, uh, I, I'm gonna, any further comments, questions? Everybody clear on what we're doing here? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pawnee, for helping us out there. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number seven, uh, discussion regarding location and possible agenda items. For the upcoming Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting and possible direction to staff.
Thank you, Chairman Martini. Kim Rickin, Water Resources Program Manager, for the record. So this is a standing agenda. I'm impressed. Determine what items will. On the, on the next meeting agenda. Um, I have a couple of things that I wanted to, uh, put out there that I will be putting on the agenda. Should they work out. The workshop results, obviously, from today will be on the agenda for approval and recommendation moving forward. Um, the affluent guidance document, um, Jim and I have been talking about having Jeff Curtis and Rick Warner. Do we want to have that for the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission? And then.
Yeah, the status report on the, on progress with that project.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do a status report on that. Um, we're gonna bring forward some regional water management plan updates on various chapters that are completed and various chapters that are still, um, in the works. And I wasn't sure, do I need to bring the data instincts? Back for recommendation to the WRWC as we work on that new contract and working with, uh, Michael Pawnee? To get that extended so that we can get them paid. So is that something that I bring back?
Yeah, because they were out of money, right?
Yes, so they were out of budget. So I don't know if I bring that to the planning commission or directly to, I think you guys have to recommend it to the WRWC, right?
Yeah, I think that's the right.
So that'll be on the agenda. And then if there's any other items that the board wishes to. For me to include, you can talk about that, or you can contact me outside. Okay?
Question, are we still looking at the January 5th?
We're still on schedule for January 5th. Um, I also wanted to throw out there that January 19th is the WRWC meeting, and we're hoping to hold a joint. Workshop meeting to present the priorities and, and go through that. So if that meeting date works for everybody.
What was that day again? I'm sorry?
January 19th.
What time is that? They typically meet?
Night in the morning.
Just got heads up, because we got a double board meeting at 10, not the same day, so.
And maybe we should do 8:30 or earlier. Yeah. Okay.
Uh, the morning of the 19th will not work for me. Uh, Vice Chair Wright, are you available? Thank you, Mervyn.
Well, if it ends up not working for folks, let me know, and we'll try to figure out an alternate schedule for that joint workshop. But as it stands right now, January 19th, I didn't hear John if Mervyn was able to.
I got a, I got a thumbs up from Mervyn. He, he can chair that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mervyn.
And then just a reminder that the March 2nd meeting, um, will bring some of the budget review. Forward for tentative budget for the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission to review and recommend to the WRWC. And then the March 16th meeting would be a joint budget review meeting. I just wanted to throw that meeting date out there as well. And I'll send that out, and that's all I have.
All right, any comments from the commission? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item eight, commissioner comments. Any comments from the commission? I have one, Kim. I, uh, I like the way the survey worked this year. That makes me feel better. I, I didn't see any way that Mr. Entlow gamed it this time, so. Well done, um, in this new normal that we are in here in, in, in the COVID era. So thank you very much for your efforts. Uh, you were well prepared. The survey worked very smoothly, and, uh, I, uh, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, uh, any other comments? Okay, moving on, item nine, staff comments. Kim?
No staff comments at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 10, public comment. Anyone wishing to make comment will have three minutes. Jen, do we have any cards?
I have none, thank you.
I think I see a hand up out there.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, hi. Uh, good morning, Matthew D. Martini. I just want to make a quick, uh, comment on the budgeting. Uh, I would hope that, uh. Even though some items are lower on the priority list, such as the, the certified landscape technician one. That a higher level of looking at it could be, you know, those are also. You know, something like that, that's a, a very low amount of, of funds. Should be balanced, you know. in regards to that. As far as the discussion of, you know, putting a, maybe a cutoff and cutting everything that's lower on the priority, even though something's lower on the priority list, it may be a lower amount of funds that which could actually put it higher on the priority list because it's such a smaller expenditure placed towards something like that, like the landscape technician certification. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. D. Martini. Any other public comment? Hearing none, thank you all for participating today. We'll see y'all in the new year, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.